Okay, mine is flipped to three o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting order. And if you have one of these phones on you, please turn it to silent. And if you'll join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're gonna start our meeting with a workshop. We are gonna be interviewing two different engineering firms. But if you do wish to speak to the board later on any agenda item, please fill out a card in the back and turn it into your own for sure. And with that, I'll call role. Our attorney here is here. Tony Pierre.
Attorney. Thank you.
Supervisor Tinkles, Supervisor.
Yes, she did.
Supervisor Feinberg, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Larity, and District Manager for Shuik, in attendance.
Madam Chairman?
Yes. I think it was two meetings.
Madam Chairman, I realize that we cannot acquire the firm who does not being interviewed to exit the room. However, in the past, professional courtesy has indicated that that would be a good idea for them. So you may want to make that suggestion. Mr. Attorney is Jimmy Beedle.
The score is, yes, because it's under either general opinions or case files, inappropriate to ask or request it. Now typically, as a matter of course, individuals making presentations will voluntarily absent them from the board room, but they have the full right and opportunity to present what they wish. The typical practice is they excuse themselves. The board cannot make that request.
That's okay with me.
There you go.
I think he said the same thing.
Hopefully it's approved.
We have two companies.
The thought was there, Bill.
We have two companies that have remained in the running. One of them had dropped out of the three that we had chosen, so we will start with Kissinger Camp.
There's the one that dropped out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. I have that still on my old schedule. Well, that was easy. So we'll start with Tetra Tech then. They were next in line.
You have handouts.
It'd be great.
I'm fine. I don't think you can watch it. Sorry, I'm fine with that. I can always go online and get it.
Even got you guys dressed up?
You are.
Thank you.
No, sir, that's the supplemental that we made.
You got something in sewer building like you're working.
Sorry, I was trying to get my little clicker to work, but it's not. So I'll go through this fairly, fairly fast. Fifteen questions that were asked, and I've got about sixty slides of a lot to say. So with that, I'll get to the beginning. First of all, thank you. And let me get into the slideshow. Do you see where that's at? Do you see the slideshow? Is that it?
Yeah, your honor.
Okay, so I've set this up to actually, oops. Hang on. There we go. All right, we gotta figure it out. Introductions, then we're gonna go through the questions, and then the closing and questions for you to ask me. It probably is easiest because I've got a lot of slides for me to get through it, but if you think it would be better to ask me questions as you go along and not oppose to that, we just have a lot of slides. So with me today, of course, I'm Danny Nelson. I've served as your district engineer for the last nine years. Tyler Wainwright and Stephen Agapi have also assisted in that role. So that'll get right to the questions. So these slides are laid out where I have the questions, and then the answers following it. So this is just as it was published. Where is our office location? What is the size? And what, you know, what do we do out of that office? So with that, our office location, where our primary offices is in Astero, it's about fifteen minutes from here. We have a second office, which is in Fort Myers, that primarily does geotechnical work. Our office staff includes five professional engineers, one full-time intern, that's Steven, one part-time intern, two CAD designers, and five field staff. So what we specialize in, and we'll go over the next slides on that, is government infrastructure. So if our resources aren't enough, we have twelve hundred resources throughout Florida and seventeen thousand total within the company. So this just shows where our total offices are. We have over four hundred offices worldwide. Of course, we have a lot of resources right here in Fort Myers, Florida, and in our office, so we don't anticipate using any of those others, just to give you an idea. So the staff members that will attend your board meetings and serve as a primary liaison, that, of course, is myself, Tyler, and Steven. We each have either bachelor's or environmental degrees. I've been working in southwest Florida. We're all born and raised here. Our spouses were born and raised here. We're not going anywhere. Our entire careers have been with Tetra Tech. I've been with the firm for twenty-two years. Tyler's been with the firm since 2012, six years, over six years. And Steven actually started with us as a college intern and then started full-time when he graduated in fifteen. So again, our specializing, our service specializes in government infrastructure. So that's included within southwest Florida alone, well over two hundred public works projects for government agencies. And as some of the questions are related to utility infrastructure, over five hundred miles of infrastructure. So that gets us into what is the specialty of our firm? Our firm was founded in nineteen sixty-six by five professors from, I think, Southern Cal, and that specialty was to preserve our watersheds, our water resources. So that's basically been the focus of our company, is preserving water. So you'll see on the next slide where some of that specialty comes out in our rankings, but we also do environmental work, infrastructure for vertical infrastructure. We have architects, resource management. We also do a lot with energy. So with that, Tetra Tech is the fourth-largest engineering firm in the world, sorry, in the country, two point eight billion annually. We are publicly traded. As I mentioned before, we have seventeen thousand employees. The E and R in the middle, that's our bible for how we're measured as an engineering firm. That's called Engineering News Records, a publication. And they collect data from all the engineering firms and then rank them based on work done. So we've been the number-one firm for the last fifteen years for water. You see the other rankings that I mentioned, we're the top, in the top four in terms of dollar volume as a design firm, pure design firm. Continuing with that specialty, we have engineers specializing in water, wastewater, transportation, environmental, geotechnical. We have architects, we have electrical engineers, hydrogeologists, we even have contractors and licensed operators for treatment facilities. Again, that specialty is in with government and serving public work. So that's basically anything you see, that's public work. So roads, signage, drainage, water, wastewater, reclaimed water, that's basically what we Experience with renewal and replacement of wastewater lift stations, including valves and piping. We have a significant amount of that experience. And as I go through these slides, I'm focusing on our southwest floor experience. We have a significant amount more. So when you see slides that are focusing on southwest Florida, it's just we have a lot of experience locally on that, so that's what we're just going over. So in Cape Coral alone, we've been working with them for over fifteen years on lift station rehabilitation projects. We've done over thirty, and that's been full restoration from control panels to wet wells to valving to valve vaults to piping, conversion from dry pit stations to wet pit, odor control. We've also done eighteen new wastewater pumping stations, and we've also assisted them with variances requirement within the state that if you have more than or two or more force maids coming into your system, or you have over a twelve-inch or larger force man coming in, you've gotta have emergency power. But sometimes it doesn't make sense where you've got, they had cases where they had a school in a park connected to a lift station, but during an emergency event, nobody's at the school and nobody's at the park. So we're able to get variances for some cases like that. Collier County, similar. We've done nearly fifteen rehabilitation projects there. We have also done studies for them where we've looked at ways to maximize their capacity, not just looking at the wet wells, but also looking at the collection system. And that helps them on knowing when to move pumps during a power outage, so they can either move diesel pumps or generators to different pump stations. We've also done effluent infiltration studies with them. And we also set up diesel, diesel pump and generator standards requiring new projects moving forward if they meet certain criteria to be installed there. Sanibel, we've done ten stations, new and rehab. Hendry County, three stations. We've done odor control of both the Girl Scout and Stony Brook improvements there. And Orange County, although that was not southwest Florida, it was pretty significant where we've done over thirty rehabilitation projects there. These are just some of the photos. These are mostly Cape Coral, Collier County, Lee County. So that gives us a question. Five, experience with stormwater management, planning and permitting, including master plans, system maintenance, cleaning of drains, pipes, structures. I'll answer each one of those individually. The first is on planning and modeling. Tetra Tech has worked for EPA for over forty years with their Clean Water Act. We served as a technical advisor for modeling. We developed a water quality model that's used for nutrient modeling of water quality within southwest Florida. That was done through DEP for the EPA. I've got a picture of what that covers here in a second. We've also performed over two thousand, TMBL is Total Maximum Daily Load projects throughout the country. We've done stormwater modeling, both hydraulic and water quality, for Cape Coral, Fort Myers Beach, Lehigh Acres, Hendry County, and Naples. This is actually that model. The larger, that's basically Astero Bay, that's Charlotte Harbor to the north, and then that's the Cluse de Hachy, the long finger you see out on the south side. So with that, master planning, that was the question. So we've prepared over twenty major stormwater master plans throughout Florida. Within southwest Florida alone, we've done master plans for Naples. The integrated master plan actually looked at how to best use stormwater, raw water, potable water, and wastewater effluent to maximize and maximize their use and minimize waste. Manita Springs was a stormwater master plan that primarily looked at flooding and water quality. Hendry County was the same, water quality and flooding. Fort Myers Beach was the same. If you've been to Fort Myers Beach, it floods after a normal rain. We've been working for the last four or five years to create outfalls and correct that problem. Cape Coral, we did water quality modeling for them. And although it wasn't a master plan, we did a facilities plan for Gateway for your program on the lake bank improvement that's going on right now. So permitting, this is part of that same question. What experience do we have permitting in southwest Florida? So again, this is southwest Florida alone. South Florida Water Management District extends all the way up to Orlando and then all the way to the east coast. We've done projects basically with every government agency. Water use permitting, we've done mitigation, we've done environmental resource permits for these communities that you see. And we've, of course, been assisting Gateway with the permit certification process. So part of the same question, what experience do we have with system maintenance? We've prepared annually certifications for Cape Coral System for a number of years. Fort Myers Beach, we assisted with developing protocol for televising and cleaning their system. Gateway, of course, we have a significant amount of experience with assisting with the televising and map development program, the development of multiple bid packages for cleaning and repair, and then, of course, language within the permit criteria to require developers to televise their system and provide ASBILs and that sort of thing. And, of course, lake bank program. And then with Hendry County, analyzing and cleaning and repair assistance there. So question six, disaster experience within Florida, Department of Versus Management and FEMA. This slide basically shows what we have within southwest Florida. In the next slides, I'm gonna show you all of the projects we have or all of the contracts we have. Tetra Tech does a significant amount of debris monitoring and cleanup assistance with FEMA through local governments. So within southwest Florida, Collier County, which also includes Naples and Marco Island, Charlotte County, the city of Cape Coral. So we hold contracts with them where we actually oversee the monitoring, debris removal, and reporting of that to FEMA. We had over, I think, five hundred employees in south Florida after Irma. This is the complete list. So this is Florida-wide, basically in alphabetical order. I've highlighted again in red those that are within southwest Florida. So again, that's just continuing that list. I don't know how many. I think there's probably seventy or so, maybe more. The next question was on our experience with reclaimed water systems, including installation, replacement, leak protection, maintenance, repair. Again, southwest floor experience, we have a significant amount of that here. With Naples, we actually prepared their reclaimed water master plan where we looked at the entire system. We modeled their entire system, and part of the goal was they had a consent order to get their effluent out of Naples River. So we did the phase one program, which actually was successful in eliminating that and searing, or sorry, extending reclaimed service to the Royal Harbor area, which is the more affluent area south of Fifth Avenue. Sanibel, similar. We actually developed their master plan, which resulted in the elimination of thirteen, basically all of their private wastewater treatment facilities, and then extended reclaimed water throughout the majority of the island. We also worked with them on wet weather storage and deep injection well for backup for redundancy. For Cape Coral, we've held their model for several years for their entire system for reclaimed water. We've designed over eighty miles of reclaimed water piping. We've done the planning for storage facilities. We currently have a project that bid last week, which is that fourth or fifth bullet down on design of four miles of sixteen to twenty-four inch reclaimed water piping along Del Prado. We've also assisted with some special projects, variances, and looking at supplemental supply. They have similar issues that the other two, as well as Gateway, have in that during the wet season, they can't get rid of their water during the dry season, they don't have enough. So one of the items we did, the next to last bullet, was assisted with developing a supplemental supply for their potable system, where we take potable water from their treatment facilities, and with an air gap, we dump it into their basins where they then pump out into the irrigation system. We've also done alternative evaluation and modeling for surface water supply. With a Gateway, we've, historically, we've done your water use permit renewal in the past. We've done salinity calculations. We've designed your pipeline that extends up to Gateway Boulevard that was installed a couple of years ago. We've also hold your reclaimed water model, irrigation model, and we've added water conservation requirements to the permit criteria manual. Within Charlotte County, we've assisted the city of Pontegorroda with effluent, holding pond for their effluent. And although that last one is a little bit odd, it's kind of unique, and it was one of the first projects I did, where we actually created a system where we use reclaimed water to flush toilets and wash laundry, which is one of the, I think it's the only one I know of in the state of Florida. It wouldn't really be applicable here, but it's a cool project. Question eight, prior south Florida experience, working with community development districts or special districts as district engineer or other capacity, including conveyance and turnover, lake bank erosion, and development standards and permit criteria. So the first one is, what experience do we have with CDDs? We only serve Gateway. We've only, that's all we've served, is Gateway as far as community development districts. The only other special districts we've served are Lehigh Acres Municipal Service Improvement District, which is your neighbor to the, well, the beach to the north, and Florida Governmental Utility Authority, although they're not a special district, they were, they're quasi-governmental, set up by Florida statutes. So now going into the actual individual items. So since Gateway is the only CDD we've served, all of this experience is with Gateway. So with conveyance and turnover, since two thousand and nine, we've performed all of the plan reviews, and those that have made it to the turnover stage, we've assisted with that process as well. So these are essentially the ones that have come through since two thousand and nine. Lake Bank erosion was our experience with that. Again, our experience is with Gateway as far as special districts go, more CDDs. And this program has been going on for several years, where we first looked at prioritization of the lake banks by walking the lakes with various individuals, developing alternatives such as Riprap, Fleximatt, just looking at fill, geotextiles, the anchor reinforced matting, GeoTube, and GeoWeb. We then prepared the facilities plan, which allowed for the funding. Then we looked at doing the pilot programs. The first one we did, which really wasn't a pilot program, but I put it on there, was associated with flowway issue at Stony Brook, which came to life through a fire that was discovered, and Fleximatt was used. It was a good product. I like it. It's just a high cost, performed well. The next pilot that was actually done truly as a pilot was one oh four, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight, where after bringing to the board multiple different options, we used the arm anchor reinforced matting, and that was part where we discovered that, you know, rock was a good item to add to help stabilize below the control elevation. And within twenty-five, twenty-eight, and Pelican, and also one twenty-six, we used the GeoWeb, which really did not perform that well in our circumstance. This just shows you what some of those items look like. The anchor reinforced matting to the top, the GeoWeb, which is, or sorry, geotextile, which is similar to the armor reinforced, it's just not anchored. The GeoWeb is the third one at the top. Basically, it's a weaving that looks kind of like spider web, and you fill it with material. The Fleximatt I talked about is a concrete material with open holes in between, allows vegetation to grow. The GeoTube in the bottom left, Riprap, and then coconut matting. So with that, we moved into the actual program, calling the facilities plan, achieving the funding. Year one, the lakes that were done there, those are the more severe lakes. Year two, also phase one, that's what we're in the process of completing now. We're not done and have obviously some issues that need to be addressed on the construction side. And then the remainder of that phase one, we should be able to move forward with as soon as the rainy season is done. They've already been approved by DEP to move forward with those. And then we're currently in the planning phase, planning stage for the phase two work, which we get into the less severe. So one of the things that we've actually been able to do, again, let the more severe or the more costly, this last round, we're able to reduce the cost by about twenty-five percent. What you see in the yellow is the areas that were still severe, and the anchor reinforced matting was used there. The blue is where we used a lesser material, that's just a geotextile. And as we move forward, that will be able to continue even more on reduction. These are just some photos of what the construction and finished product is looking like. So continuing with that question, the last part of that was development of standards and permit criteria manuals. We've actually worked on four different updates to the permit criteria, permit criteria manual alone, and a lot of those have been based on lessons learned, some of the things that we've seen on ASBILs that haven't been where we wanted to be, updating the fee schedule, revamping components of the permit criteria manual for clarity, adding bonding requirements. That wasn't a requirement of the past, and that's allowed some additional protection. Adding some water quality requirements, looking at the need for aerators and actually requiring aerators on new ponds moving forward, then adding roadways to the bonds, enhancing inspection requirements, and then looking at, like I mentioned, the water conservation requirements. So, and adding yard drain requirements. So those are requirements that previously did not exist, and through lessons learned were added. So question nine, prior experience working with developers in Gateway, any conflicts of interest with developers, contractors, engineering firms? As we mentioned, we don't do development work. We work for governments, so this question is probably my shortest slide. So we don't work with developers, we don't work with the engineers or contractors doing that development work, so we don't have any conflict. Ten, prior work experience with Florida Department of Environmental Protection State Revolving Fund. And this is one where I probably have probably more than most engineers or folks in my role. I've been involved, I think, with personally over two hundred million dollars' worth of SRF-funded projects. Again, statewide, we have a significant amount, or these are all just southwest Florida projects. Again, Gateway, the lake bank improvements. Sanibel, we did sixty million dollars' worth of improvements, collection, treatment, and reclaimed water. Pontegorroda, we've got a forty million dollar project, that project's going on right now, where it's water supply, deep injection well, and treatment. Cape Coral, we did over two hundred miles of potable water, reclaimed water, and wastewater piping. That was over seventy million dollars. Hendry County, fifteen million dollars, again, piping and treatment. Fort Myers Beach, it's the project that's going on right now. It will go on for several years. It's been going on for several years already, and it'll total about sixty million dollars. And a few years ago, we did about forty miles of piping and treatment facilities for DeSoto County. Question eleven was prior experience with local governments in Collier and Lee Counties, including general contracts. Again, that's the bulk of what we do. So this is just a list of the contracts that we have, the types of services, and in the far right, you'll see yes in all of those columns, that we have continuing contracts with all of those. And this is basically every government agency, local city or county government in southwest Florida. So you can see the types of services that we do, which is general engineering, water, wastewater, utilities. So Sanibel, Pontegorroda, Gateway, Cape Coral, Hendry County, Fort Myers Beach, Charlotte County, Lee County, Collier County, Marco Island, Manita Springs, Village of Astero, where office is located, city in Naples. I may have missed one or two, but that's basically, again, that's what we do. Current and prior experience working with south Florida Water Management District. And I'll just start by saying Tetra Tech has extensive experience with the Water Management District. In fact, we've done work directly for Water Management District on water quality monitoring, the Big Cypress Basin. We've done permitting. We also designed their Big Cypress, assisted with permitting of their Big Cypress Basin facility, which is a operations center in Collier County. But in addition to that, we've, that's more on their operations side. On the regulatory side, we've done environmental resource permits, water use permits, mitigation. In fact, we own, Tetra Tech owns their own mitigation bank. I don't think that'll ever come into play with your needs, but, so we have a significant amount of experience. For the last several years, we've been working, you know, to have quarterly meetings. We hold quarterly meetings with Water Management District. And I say to improve past relationships. I think there's a very good relationship now between Gateway and south Florida, despite some of the recent stuff we've seen with certifications. That wasn't always the case. So continuing that, basically, all of those government agencies that I mentioned, we've performed either environmental resource permits, which is basically your stormwater permits, or water use permits, so. Question thirteen, do you provide 3D subsurface mapping? I'll start by saying, yes, as a company, we have that equipment. We do not do that in Florida, and the question was, so hopefully that I'm answering this the way that they're asking for it. Because in southwest Florida, that I know of, there's only one firm that has done it in southwest Florida, and we worked on that project, and it's for Fort Myers Beach. And I could be wrong. I'm sure there are other companies that own equipment, but I don't believe they've actually done work here in southwest Florida. But Cardinal, who is actually working for us now doing the mapping or the surveying for the phase two lakes, where we're also doing the bathymetric, they own the equipment. They own a device called Stream Device. And I'll show you basically what it does. It allows you to go above with either a trailer mounted or a walk-behind machine, and it allows you to map what's below the surface. You can also input any data you have from soil borings, that you can then log what the soils are below, and then you can map actually what's below. I don't know the relevance or how that would be very useful for Gateway, but if there's a use, certainly we have the resources and the connections for the folks that do it. Just another image of what that would look like. And this is what that walk-behind. And this is what that walk behind machine looks like, a small bomb mower. Ground penetrating radar is what's more prominently used. Ground penetrating radar simply does that. It sends a signal down, it bounces off what it finds, and then you have a survey crew go out and map what that is. What you don't know with either of these is what it is. You usually find that out from the utility owners, or you would do soft digs to see what's actually there. Tyler actually did that while he was an intern in college, but. So hazard for firm secured federal grants for stormwater management projects. So yes, we have. We've done hazard mitigation grant programs, I think is what you're referring to here through FEMA and how FEMA does, and I presented at the last meeting on how those funds are distributed and essentially after a storm event, funds are released for those impacted areas. So we've assisted Deltona, we've assisted Fort Myers Beach on multiple projects, and 13, 14, that project's been implemented, projects in 17 have been implemented. And just last Friday, last Friday to Friday before, that funding that I brought before and told you, the local mitigation strategy group, those funds were allocated. That would have been on the eighth, so two weeks ago from tomorrow. I believe Fort Myers Beach got 2.8. I'm not sure what Sanibel got, but we are assisting both of them with their applications so they can secure those funds. Also worked, Harms Marsh is with Lampsid, your Lehigh Acres Municipal Service Improvement District. That actually was not hazard mitigation, but that was part of SRF funding, State Revolving Fund, as you're using now. And it was the first completed American Recovery and Reinvestment Act in the state of Florida. In addition to that, we've done water quality grant assistance with Charlotte County and Fort Myers Beach. We've been able to assist in them securing funds for water quality projects, and those can be used for stormwater projects. So prior history working in Gateway, just listed some of the more major stuff. We've assisted with utility, with development of CIP items, with the irrigation loop line improvements that I've mentioned, your hydraulic model, blending protocol for your saline wells, water use permit renewal. We've done inspections. We've assisted for a number of years in the past on your utility agreement, the meter replacement program, and with some lift station improvements, including odor control. On the traffic side, Pelican Boulevard turn lane on the entrance, the final lift, road construction review, so, and site distance reviews. On the stormwater side with, and I've gone over a lot of that already, with understanding construction issues, assisting with developing bid sets for repair of some of that work with your system map development for your stormwater, with control structure modifications, your lake bank program that's going on now. And then miscellaneous, we've worked on your NPDS permitting and reporting over the last several years. Again, we do the plan and plan reviews for all of your developments, your annual bond certifications. We assisted with the five-year monitoring, what was 47, 48, 48, your permit criteria updates. We've done surveying. We've done the engineering reports for Pelican Reserve. In fact, we've got a call tomorrow to discuss the fifth amended report tomorrow on that. So we've served you for nine years, over nine years now, and we've only served Gateway. We haven't served any developers, so we have no conflicts of interest. So why select Tetra Tech? We understand your system. We understand your needs. We have a dedication and commitment to Gateway. We have the local staff. We have the local knowledge. This is what we do. We don't serve developers. We focus on government. We focus on utility. We focus on infrastructure, and we have no conflict. So with that, I'll open up the questions.
I will start.
I don't have a lot. One of the things I'd like to do is a result of the, trying to prepare this white paper on our stormwater system. I think we've got to get back to the basics. Pelican Reserve has done a great job with their group over there. In fact, it's embarrassing what they've done to us. They've got documents that we drool to have. They have a GIS system that is second to none. We have none of that. So I'd like to go back and work on having you guys work with us. The last time we started, five years ago, when talking about GIS, that dog didn't hunt. We never got it done. We need to get our stormwater system, irrigation system, our water system, and our sanitary sewer system on maps with what we know are as built, not those drawings up in the hotbox. Some of them are true and some of them aren't. But we need to get that basic information so that we know what we're dealing with. And so that's probably one of the biggest ones I would like to see going forward that Tetra Tech would assist us on. This time, maybe give us the guidance of working with, if we have a subcontractor doing it, leading them and telling them what we want, because you know what the end product is.
Well, just so the board knows, because in the past, you've used a local GIS and then no, that just hasn't gone very smoothly. I don't think there's been really the drive. We do GIS work in-house, and our GIS manager has been with us for nearly 20 years and is one of the best I've ever seen. So, I mean, I could get him in front of the board to show you what some of those capabilities are and some of the things that you're missing out on right now and some of the things that we need. But I think the board needs to make a decision if you're committed to the GIS or not, because I think it's kind of been lukewarm in the past. That's all the questions I had.
Yeah, I've just got a couple, and they're probably a little more high level. You know, first, Danny, in our environment, how do you define the role of the district engineer?
Well, we're serving as your arm to assist you on professional matters associated with your infrastructure, with your public works. You're a public works agency. That's essentially what you are. Our job is to provide our professional expertise and guidance with that, and to work with your staff and your district manager to help implement improvements, to help with your regulatory issues, and to help with those sort of issues to help on the capital side when you need to have design issues. And that's really what our role is, and that's who we serve, that's how we serve our clients.
And how do you, and when I say you, I'm really speaking about Tetra Tech, but you as the, our district engineer, how do you make your success with your other customers? Or how do you make your success with us or in general your customers?
Well, our job as engineers is to stay informed. So our job is to keep our clients happy. And I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping our clients happy for the most part. So we do work for our clients. We make sure that we do good work for our clients. We address issues if there are issues with our clients, and that's essentially how we get repeat business. So that's our goal, is to provide the best professional service we can, to be honest with our clients, to not hide anything, to be out in the open, to be transparent, to tell you where we have deficiencies and need to be, and need to have corrective measures, but ultimately to serve you and make sure that your needs are met and to keep you happy.
And would you be in favor, this is a loaded question, I guess, be in favor of some performance based incentives in a contract?
Certainly, compensation and financial considerations are not part of this evaluation. I think they're inappropriate to be asked.
Part of, so if I rephrase the question. May I put your name, Giuliani?
Unfortunately, legislature has set up, unfortunately, legislature has established this process.
Okay. So then I'll make a statement. I think part of what we need to drive as an organization is definitive KPIs, definitive metrics that help us deliver projects against our priorities, and I would look at them as, you know, I mean, just core, just quality speaking costs. But I think in order for us to deliver for our residents, we need to make sure that we're scoping appropriately, coming up with the most efficient solutions. And once we, you know, have those solutions identified, executing on them on time, on budget, within our quality thresholds is absolutely critical. I think there's a long history of projects that we have been a part of that have not delivered within those thresholds. And so my purpose for that question that I guess retracted or then slapped on the hand board, and it's really, it's no biggie, is to look at a firm that's going to help us drive those things, that is going to, whether it's being incentivized through just how we evaluate performance, or whether it's compensation, is how do we do a better job moving forward in those areas? And that's one of the things that I'm looking for in our engineering firm, is to help us be more efficient, more productive, and have more accountability in our firm. And there's no response.
No, and I think part of that, but what you have just indicated is appropriate for consideration from the standpoint of one of the criteria, is the willingness to meet time and budget requirements. I mean, that is appropriate to be considered and evaluated in engineering firm. I think that's, in essence, what you've indicated.
So on top of that is, how do we, in your opinion, how do we continue to drive value engineering with those other considerations?
Yeah, understood. And I'll say that obviously what, when we do projects for our clients, we're successful when we come in under budget and ahead of schedule. Gateway's a little bit different than most clients in that you're a very, you know, you're a small organization. So I think part of that is defining, prioritizing what the projects are, whether it's something that is, let's say, a capital improvement project that we're working on, like the lake bank, or whether it's something that is non-capital improvement, identifying what those are, what the drivers are, establishing a schedule. If it's something that we're working on a scope for, establishing that schedule. And I think one of the things that's key and we've done in the past and we really need to get back to it, is having, whether it's weekly or bi-weekly meetings with, you know, the district manager and staff. And that has been very helpful as a whole on making sure that things, you know, stay on course. But I can tell you, and you don't need to check our references, you certainly could check our references, and I will tell you that the majority of the projects that we do on the local side are not to exceed, and we come in, we could use up that budget. We could find reasons to use up that budget. I would probably say 80% of the time, we come in under budget on that. One of the projects that we showed up there, one of the clients was city of Cape Coral. We did a $73 million program with them that every measure of it was ahead of schedule and under budget, and we're able to do that. And I say from the engineering side as well as from the contract side, for a $73 million budget, actually came in under budget from what the bids were. So bid amount was 66 million. The total price was 73, but that included professional fees and everything else, $66 million. The actual construction cost on that, you usually have about 5% change orders that are added on from unforeseen conditions. We ended up less than. That's unheard of in our industry. But how you're able to do that is we held meetings regularly with staff. We held meetings regularly with the contractors. As far as value engineering, what we actually would do is on our design, we have a completely separate group that would do QAQC on all of our projects. If I did a design, or anybody on my team did a design or part of that design, they would not be a part of that QAQC, because it needs to be somebody that's unbiased. We would do constructibility reviews. So we're working with a client, looking at value engineering. We'll quite often work with contractors that may not be involved with the project to seek constructibility input. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Senator. Danny, when I, I've been on this floor two hundred and eight years. And not everything has been smooth during those eight years. And while I'm not blaming you or your firm for the roughness that we've experienced, in the future, I think I would like to see an organization that is proactive rather than reactive. It seems to me that in the past, every time we had a board meeting, there were one or two or three or 15 emergencies that had to...